We start with the pledge of allegiance, please stand as usual.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Start roll call on the front right.
Counselor President Johnson.
Counselor President Johnson.
Mayor Jimmy John King.
Counselor President Craig Anderson.
Counselor President Jeremy Alton.
Looking for approval of the night's agenda, any additions to staff?
Do you have anything additional here?
Anything here?
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that carries. Approval of regular council meeting minutes of July ninth, twenty twenty four.
Make a motion to approve those minutes.
Motion to approve a second. Questions or discussion? Hearing none. All in favor say aye.
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 Opposed, that carries. Next is finance and budget. We have the council table, the council table listing in front of you on paper tonight. If you have any questions, Director, but Finance Director Carla, please.
I make a motion to approve.
Motion to approve a second.
Second.
Questions or discussion? Hearing none. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that carries. Takes us to motion and general business. First item tonight on the motions and general business is a public hearing. The city has received complaints regarding the condition of the property owned by Gary Johnson, three oh two South Main Street. Pictures are attached. Attorney left sent the first request to abate the nuisance on June twenty six and on July twelfth, a notice of a public hearing. Mr. Johnson has failed to abate the nuisance. So I'm going to close the regular meeting and I'm going to open the public hearing. Pursuant to city code section six ten point zero two H and six ten point zero five sub point two A and sub five, the city council will consider the above described nuisance. The public hearing is your opportunity to be heard on this matter and present any evidence of arguments you believe the city council should consider regarding the ordinance violations. All right, Mr. Johnson, would you like to step up to the podium?
Well, I have a few other things since I cease and desist order against people. This is the only time I'm able to speak to the council and to staff. So it's a little bit of two minutes I have. First of all, I want to thank the council members for allowing me to speak before you this evening. My only regret is that you never got to get to know me or experience my businesses before Jimmy John became mayor. But I'm not the person who portrays me to be. The offenses, public nuisance affecting health, obnoxious weeds. You know, what'll happen? I mean, I'm going to be charged for the city attorney to regulate ours. I'll be charged for someone to cut the weeds and mow the grass. I'll be charged for the city attorney to drive over from Dodge Center, supervise the job because the mayor, city clerk, and city administrator want the cost to be as high as possible for me. This is their best practices and I doubt that they will change. Under Mayor King's autocratic style of governing, following violations of city ordinance, state statute, and federal law have occurred and have gone unchallenged publicly until now. Majority of these illegal violations have been directed toward the need to cause me financial harm. City ordinance four ten point zero five, application for liquor license.
This public hearing is about your nuisance abatement.
But what you want to do?
If you want to get on the agenda for the other stuff, you'll have to make another setup. Tonight is about this. That's what the public hearings.
That's not, that's not.
I'll close the public hearing if you don't stick to the abatement.
That's not, I, well, what I'm saying here, getting to him, Mr. Mayor.
You're going to have very short time.
What you do is you don't allow the truth to come out. You want to charge me for having to have grass mowed when you, as a mayor, have violated so many of your own city ordinances. And you know it, and that's what it needs to come public. If you want me to come, if you get me on the agenda, I will, yes.
You know how to get on the agenda of the public hearing about this nuisance abatement. You either speak of the nuisance abatement or close the public hearing.
But the thing about it is that you, you, you put non-agenda items on and this whole thing with the cease and desist order, you, 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 just like you did with my liquor license revocation, it was a non-agenda item.
You've got about thirty more seconds to answer the question of the abatement.
Okay.
I'm closing the public hearing. You have to sit down.
Why don't you put me, why don't you put me on the agenda for the next council meeting?
You give the attorney a call and she'll talk to us.
I'm talking to you right now.
I'm not, we're not here for that. We're here for the abatement of your nuisance. You either talk to that or we're closing the hearing. That's your two choices, Gary.
That's my two choices?
That's your two choices.
Yeah, that's fine. But we'll bring out the stuff and it'll be very embarrassing.
Bring it up.
Sounds good to me.
Sit down.
Excuse me?
We got any oral or written comments?
Still no.
Besides the complaints that were called in?
Correct.
You can sit down now. Public hearing.
We got the complaint. It's that I didn't want to pay him. I, I will let him sit down. If you want to ask politely, I might consider that.
Public hearing's closed.
Give the nice.
Based on the filing, finding the facts, the city council hereby orders the abatement of the nuisance that will enter upon the property and moving offending items. Property owners failed to abate or prevent nuisance on the premises of three oh two South Main is currently present in plain view of the abating property owners. Photographs documenting the weeds and grass show the owners failed to abate or prevent the nuisance on the property attached that the failure to abate or prevent the nuisance on the premises of three oh two South Main is such quantities as to reasonably annoy, injure, or endanger the safety, the health, the morals, the comfort, or repose of the public. That the failure to abate or prevent the nuisance on the premises of three oh two South Main Street is such quantities as to indecent or offensive to the senses and obstruction of the free use of the property so as to interfere with the comfortable enjoyment of life or property of the public. It shall also be the responsibility of the property owner to pay the costs of said abatements, including attorney's fees, administrative costs, which may be assessed to the property being paid with property taxes. Will be the motion on that bill?
Uh, that is correct.
Somebody want to make the motion that we're going to do abate the problem?
I'll make the motion to abate it.
Second?
I'll second.
Questions or discussion? Hearing none. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that carries. Next item is ordinance amendment. Chapter nine parks. Attached, please find an ordinance amendment to chapter nine parks. The park board has recommended changing the closing time from ten thirty to ten. The addition of Rolling Ridge Park is also added to the list of city parks. This is the first read of the ordinance. No action is needed. Park Board. Appointing Luke Loney in. Park Board Chair Jeff Byer has received the resignation of the faculty billings due to her moving out of Sturfield. Mayor King has received a letter of interest from Luke Loney. He has, excuse me, expressed his interest to serve on the park board. King and Byer are recommending approval of appointing Luke Loney to fill out the billings term, which ends in December twenty sixth. Council action requested to approve the appointment of Luke Loney to the park board.
Make that motion.
We have a motion. We have a second. Questions or discussion? Hearing none. All in favor say aye.
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 Opposed, that carries. Public Works Department. Custodian position. Personnel committee met on seven sixteen twenty four to review minutes and then to review the proposed job description for custodian. This new job description is replacing a maintenance one position on the October eleventh. This is due to the retirement of Mark Derman. This revised position will remain as a union employee, pay grade seven. The custodian position will maintain all city facilities, including city hall, fire hall, library, park, bathrooms, park pavilions, civic center, public works, the pool, the waste water treatment plant. This position will replace the contracted company that the fire department currently pays. Council action requested consideration of the new position description and to advertise for the custodian position.
Mayor King, there is an update. We did find out that Mark Derman is actually going to retire on September sixth, so it has been moved up a month.
Okay. So do we make a motion to accept the position and then the motion to advertise? Or just can it all be one that we?
I think it can all be one.
Do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion to take the position, advertise.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Questions or discussion? Hearing none. All in favor say aye.
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 Opposed, that carries. All right, our next item is acceptance of Sears House and responsibilities of the Historical Society. As per discussions of previous council workshops and during the twenty twenty four budget process, it was in desire of the city council to assist the Sturfield Historical Society to continue for the benefit of the Sturfield community. The Historical Society has signed a resolution and quit playing deed giving the Sears House and the assets to the city of Sturfield. Council action requested acknowledge the acceptance of the Sears House property and all the assets from the Sturfield Historical Society. We have some discussion on this or questions?
Bill, often does this, does this house get used and is it just a few times a year?
In the past, there have been more regular tours given. I think a lot of times on weekends. Uh, now it's just reverted to special events that our community has. And since some of the volunteers that have helped all these years are starting to age or get beyond a normal regular routine to it, that's where that request originally came to us. So I think for now, we would only probably coordinate tours on a special community event purpose.
I believe that's all they were doing the last couple of years. They had to call in and see if they could get somebody to come down and open it up.
And then when we put together the community development person's job description, this was in there that they'll assist for help with that, um, with the regular tours.
Does that be part of the custodian's work too?
For, for the, I heard that it will go in.
Yeah, it is.
Jurors.
Does it already fall in our, our?
And we're fortunate, there is a trust fund, um, that's been helping fund it when it was through their entity. That will now get transferred for us to use. So we'll be able to use trust funds. I think it's in there.
Actually, every, we've got the trust funds that the money comes in every year as well as there was a bank account that came up over. We did complete that at the end of last year. It was in your twenty twenty four budget for the Historical Society for this year. Public Works has been, um, doing the maintenance, the mowing, the snow plowing, all of those things with it as well. Any of the bills that were associated with that have come over to the city and are encompassed in our budget.
So one of the added things we'll see is we'll have that added to our blanket coverage of property coverage. And then, of course, the contents to the extent you can. It's, uh, historical items.
Any other questions or discussion? Hearing none. We need a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve.
To accept it?
Yes, to accept.
Sears, we have a second?
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that also carries. Takes us to mayor staff consultant reports, mayor's report tonight. Simply, they're sent out to the families of Kenneth Skip, Eric, Jordan Peter, and Phyllis Mercer. Don't forget that every Wednesday at the United Methodist Church from four to seven, there is a farmer's market. They're starting to get some more produce show up and some other items if you'd like to stop by. Tomorrow night at Bear Cave Park, it's Bob Schleif for the Wednesday night concert. Thrive and King's Rocket Cake Cattle Company are sponsoring that one. We'll have a meat raffle again. Stewie Cruiser's Car Show every Friday night. They're always a good one to get to if you get the time. County Fair this week. Good luck to everyone from our area and our forest clubs and just doing the open class stuff. Good luck up there from all them the week. Don't forget, the community band is going to play a concert at the Bear Cave Amphitheater on July thirtieth at seven P M. Community Theater is also back and they'll be doing Footloose starting August second. So there's some things right around town you can do if you're looking for something. That's all I've got for now. City Administrator Bill, your report?
Yeah, reports in your pocket. Uh, one thing to add on the Sturfield Society, Nate and I had all had talked too that, um, uh, when the new edition is here, if we have some display case areas, that periodically we can rotate historical items from the Sears House at the library for different exhibits and displays. And then Nate and I had talked too about his staff assisting Sandra when these events occur, tours, or back and forth between the two, since our library carries archival history of. Um, otherwise, one thing I really want to highlight is Mindot's the theme of the day. And so obviously no formal decision has to be made today. Um, uh, we wanted to give you a first crack at seeing what some of the options could be and things to think about. Obviously, this will take another work session with all of you. But Mindot is also planning two additional public meetings. One being, they're coming up in August, so you're still free to attend those. They'll be at the Civic Center. One is just going to be a meeting where just the residents and the churches are invited to attend. I mean, the public can attend, but invitations will go out to them. And then there'll be a follow-up public meeting where our whole community can comment or review what you got to see here. And then the Mindot folks will help explain it. So hopefully that'll help you start gathering some, um, feedback um, as we all look at what works great for the city, what works great for the immediate residents, and then, of course, the community overall. And then try to keep in mind Mindot's, um, improvements that they're holding for as well. Um, let's see. Yeah, so, I think, well, Carla usually touches on it as we get close to the budget hearing. I keep thinking of the projects there, uh, filing, uh, for the offices. And then, I believe that should do it.
Well, I think we both forgot to mention, maybe Justin, well, National Night Up is coming up first Tuesday in August, correct, Justin? Yep, so parties can register down here if they want to, or they can register up there with you guys, correct?
Yeah, isn't it on the ninth?
Sixth, ain't it?
Yeah, it's one. The first Tuesday. No, it should be the first Tuesday. That's all it is.
It's the sixth.
Well, they can register through the sheriff's office, so I think more likely they can come into here.
All right, you can touch on that on your request too.
And then just remember your next regular meeting is on Monday, the twelfth, because of the primaries on the thirteenth.
Thank you, Bill. Any questions for Administrator? Hearing none. We'll go to Finance Director Carla.
Um, working on the preliminary budget for twenty twenty five, still looking for feedback from you guys. Um, if you have any ideas, would like to do a workshop with you guys just to kind of roll through the beginning of that. Um, probably at the end of August. I don't know if it's feasible to do it before the council meeting, if we can get an hour before the council meeting, or if that doesn't work with schedules and we need to do it another night. So, um, I can send out an email and you can kind of weigh in that way, but just to kind of give you a heads up on that. Um, and like I said, if there's anything that you guys, um, would like me to relay encompass into things, let me know. Um, so I can put that in there even before that date.
Any other questions for Carla? All right, thank you, Carla. Public Works Director Sean.
I sent Sheriff a report this time and I don't know why it's not in there, but I'm looking at the report that I've centered. And, uh, a lot of the last week, we did open up, that we would clean up curbside after the severe storm. So for the, not this week, but last week, we went around most of the week cleaning up after that. People had to get it out through the street. And then we also opened the dump up without charging for one week for anybody that had stuff with that. Uh, that pretty much kept us busy all week last week messing around with that stuff.
Yeah, nice, nice job.
Uh, and then we did, Monday was our, because we're done early on Fridays, we said Monday we'd go check it in case somebody got it out later Friday. But that was the last day and we didn't do anything to hang it up.
Good.
And charges will be applied back to what they normally would have done with the dump operation. So, uh, other than that, I mean, it's typical stuff, but. Fourth of July, we did delay clean up after that, the morning after, because of the heavy rains we received with it. We were going to do more damage than good, so we left stuff an extra day or two until it dried up more than we could get, like our skid loaders on tracks out to pull poles and stuff like that without doing more damage than.
I want to say the street over here by Griffin Greys where you guys, we did that grass, looking great.
Coming in light there.
Have you looked at it lately?
Yeah.
Looking great. It really is. I went down there last night and go through it. Nice job. That turned out great. Bill?
And we're thankful to have Sean here.
Yes, yes.
If you, uh.
Uh, he's a slow learner, but he'll catch on.
Sustained some injuries there that, uh, he pulled through.
All right, the only guy who's saying things are looking good, Sean. City Engineers Report, Jenna, you got anything?
Um, the construction project keeps moving outward, so they are almost done with water bands who are, both waters who are under roll guard, they'll just have to finish the island. Um, so that utility work should be wrapped up. It'll be going to services and then all through the storm. Hopefully, we're being done sometime next week, but I can't guarantee that. Um, we are in talks with the concrete contractor about coming in, um, so progressing. Making things happen, so. And we are working on next year's project and also we are keeping busy with lots of meetings for developments, so.
All right, any questions for Engineer? Bill?
And then just want to thank Jenna too, because she had some of her staff meet with us today. MPCA is going to be working with the city, uh, on an MS Forest status, which deals with stormwater, um, control, clear water, clean water, uh, what our state wants. And so as these next couple of years go by, we'll, uh, even given you, uh, the step process of how we have to incorporate that into our requirements now, uh, now that notification has been made. So thank you, Jenna.
We basically hit the next stage of regulations, so, yaps.
Oh, good. Good, good. Thank you. Thanks a lot.
Well, we didn't try to let us know, but it happened.
That's good.
We're just going to support you through it.
We're on top of things, that's for sure. All right, any other questions for Jenna? All right, thank you, Jenna. Hope you had fun in Hawaii.
We did.
Good. Nate, you got a report for us tonight, Library Director?
Yep, um, above and beyond what's in my report. Um, so far stats for the summer reading program, we've had a hundred and fifty-three school age kids sign up for the program and they have read four thousand six hundred and ninety hours. Um, we've had fifty-two preschoolers who've had three thousand nine hundred and ninety books read to them. Um, our book sale is, was last week. Uh, once I get the change cashed in, it should be made about fourteen hundred dollars over those two days. And it is everything but shark week at the Sturfield Public Library. Uh, we did an animal themed storytime. Um, we have, uh, tomorrow, the rad zoo's going to be, uh, doing their thing. And the Eagle Center is going to be, uh, doing a presentation Friday afternoon. We also have three kits this week. Um, they are a, um, kind of a dober kit for preschoolers, um, some diamond animal art for school age kits. And honest to God, the prettiest kit I've ever put together is our watercolor birds kit, but they're all sold out, so.
Good.
I'm happy to report your mom signed up for two, Mr.
Have you, uh, found any applications or any applications for?
Uh, we got a few, um, and, uh, yeah, I, I haven't contacted anyone yet. I just have to survive this week and then go from there.
Good. Any other questions for Nate? Oh, Bill, you're on.
Bill, good. Um, yeah, Bill's from over there, yeah. Um, I got to participate in one of the programs, the recent egg hunt and the frog hunt. And what a great thing their staff did. Public Works helped a little bit too. But to see the kids and families that came in going after these eggs and the frogs, um, I think it was Sarah filming the doors opening and as they all came crowding in. But just see the happiness on those kids, uh, getting prizes and finding eggs throughout the library, gets them around to each of the sections. So it's actually a good educational thing as much as it is a fun thing. And, uh, it was both indoors and outdoors and the back courtyard area too, so.
Fun for your eggs then?
Oh, yeah, golden. I got to award the golden eggs, so.
Yeah, we had, we had seventy-six people at that program. Uh, and, uh, we, kids could hunt for eggs, um, in the building until we ran out of eggs and then we fenced, Public Works fenced off our backyard. And we had another, I think, two hundred and fifty plastic frogs that, of course, hunted and brought, uh, to prizes that were hidden in the backyard. Thanks to Public Works not going, they were hidden pretty well, um, so went pretty well.
Yeah, glad to hear it. All right, any other questions for anybody over there? All right, thank you, Nate. Mayor Chief tonight, no pool director. Community Commission Board report, Stephen McPowers. I think they're all still recovering from the board. E A H R A, we got minutes in the packet, finance. Come here, nothing, anything besides budget?
We're going to do prelim budget.
All right, library?
Um, yeah, August twenty, everything.
All right, park board?
Minutes are in there.
Personnel?
Minutes are in there. We discussed the custodian thing tonight.
Good.
Fine zoning? Nothing.
Public safety?
We have the speed trailer report in there though from last week. Um, I just checked before I came in here, it was like eighteen thousand two hundred cars went south on past it in the three weeks, well, or three weeks that it's been there, with the average speed of twenty-three point seven miles an hour. So I don't, yeah, that's giving you numbers, but it's not real numbers, I would say, just because they see that number and their speed is giant and they'll either bash it or, you know, slow it down to it. If you take that away, you're going to get the people that go even faster, but I don't, I'm happy with it being twenty-three miles an hour. Um, the few people that live around there that have complained to me, it's an easy thing for me to pull up and say, well, this is what we'd see. So, uh, nineteen, yeah, it's August sixth. You can register at Roach, old said unite dot com. Um, or I'm guessing you could probably call the city hall and just.
Don't worry about it.
It's going to be, yeah. It will be involved. But we'll have people down here to hop around to little parties.
Okay. And any of you guys want to go along and take the city van and drive around if you guys want to ride along to it or?
With the speed trailer, if you guys have any other spots that's like, hey, I'd like to just see where we're at with this, let me know. I'll move wherever.
All right.
Preferably earlier than later, because I'll be going.
Yep. All right, any other questions for Justin?
Do they have one that doesn't show you how fast you're going, so it doesn't affect the outcome, and it just seems like it could do that?
Wait, this product's up.
I can mess with it. I don't know, I can mess with it. But if you, yeah, see if I can do that, I don't know. It gets kind of wonky. Sometimes it doesn't like what I'm doing. I'll, I'll check, just to see. Because I'd, I'd like to get it to just say a black screen, which I know I can get it to do, but then I can't get it to pick up speed reading, so. So that. And we get it to probably say something, just not the speed, and then maybe that'll work, but I don't know.
All right, thanks, Sean. And well, some of us, good luck and early congratulations, maybe next time we see you, you'll be a dad. We found home in college too, I hope you that.
Yeah, you did, yeah.
Thanks, Phil. Thanks for checking. Public Works?
Ready?
Uh, we're just getting ready for a housing summit. And so all of you, as well as our E D A, H R A are invited to that. That's coming up in August. And, um, so you'll cover your registration if you're interested, but that's the big item Randy's working on with our, so, the community councils. And they just didn't have minutes this time, so that's why they're not in there.
Roll call.
Uh, we've had a summer hiatus. I served with Brian on that. And so just haven't been in meetings like these.
been in meetings lately.
Okay. Trans Advisory Committee?
Uh, that meeting will be coming up.
Communications, nothing in the packet. Put the mic. Anybody wanna use those mics? All right, move your... Oh, we're gonna need to run, hold it back out a second. I gotta read this quickly. City Council welcomes and encourages Brian to participate from community. Please keep in mind that your comments must be perfect city business, must adhere to data privacy rules, small employees may be used. Please do not expect action from the council team in regard to your concerns. We also request your comments in the form of speakers you're presenting this time. All right, for you.
Uh, just some county information here. Um, Kate Edeak has retired, and so she is one of her, who's our director?
Oh, Kate Edeak?
She did? Yes, she retired, and Friday was her last day. Last Friday.
What's the party?
Party?
You already have a party too?
There was one, uh, with some binkies in the leg. And then, uh, Heidi Welch, our county administrator, has resigned. We have appointed, uh, Pete Kezen as interim administrator, and, uh, we're gonna be searching. So, obviously, nationwide, looking for, um, candidates, or another candidate. Uh, I was down at the fair today, and I hate to say it, the county lost to the city in the looking competition.
Who did it? Who was that?
Commissioner Biden.
Who's that too?
Uh, Patrick King.
Right in that?
No, Norman Wall, excuse me.
Did the mayor personally pick out where Kate's replacement?
No, not right at this moment.
Okay, excellent.
Yeah, what will happen is we're, we're gonna do our administrator first, 'cause that's kinda the, 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 the. And one question I do have, what kind of attendance do you usually get on the Wednesday night concerts at the...
Oh, I would say...